Tuesday, May 23rd, we're in room 207, 209. We're being recorded and we're all happy about that. And with that, Noel, if you could call the roll.
Tim Slocum.
Here.
Don Walsh.
Here.
John Mylone.
Here.
Sandy Pavano.
Here.
David Borley.
Present.
Peter Talbot.
Here.
Jim Janks.
Here.
Sylvia Nichols.
Here.
And David Valverde.
Terrific. Let's rise for the pledge.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the fact that the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Again, welcome. First item on our agenda is the approval of the town clerk's salary. There's a resolution on hand. Do you have Ms. Nichols to present that? Give her the time it takes.
Good. All right. Be it resolved that the town council approves Resolution 052323-1. Be it resolved that the town council per the recommendation of the personnel committee hereby adjust the salary of the town clerk by two and a half percent from the current salary of $89,731 per year to $91,974 per year effective January 1, 2024. And be it further resolved that the town council adjusts the salary of the town clerk by two and a half percent from the salary of $91,974 established as of January 21, 2024 to $94,273 effective January 1, 2025.
Second. Okay, thank you for that. Mr. Talbot, we have motion, second discussion.
Yeah, the personnel committee reviewed this. We know how important the town clerk's job is. They provide a high level of service to the town in many, many avenues. Indeed, recording and historical documents and all of the rest. And in, we try to keep her salary consistent with the other salary raises. We have also included that in this issue of the budget. So if Don or Peter can come up and add to that.
Was there a lot of fighting in the room?
Oh, there was. Yes, yes. Right.
So everything was basically...
Everything. We worked it all out.
Okay. Okay, so there's a motion, there's been discussion, so I'll call for a vote on this. All those in favor signify. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. It goes present. And now we go to the assignment of tax liens. And this is a conversation that took place in ordinance, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. And we do have, we do have the tax lien artist with us, Mr. Rurk. But we'll first introduce the motion. Will you be happy to do that?
Sure. Be it resolved that the town council approves Resolution number 052323-2. Be it resolved that the town council pursuant to Sections 12-195H, 7-254, and 7-258 of the Connecticut General Statutes authorizes a tax collector to assign for consideration such tax and sewer liens as deemed appropriate for assignment by the tax collector. And be it further resolved, the consideration for such assignments being negotiated between the town, acting through its tax collector, and the assignees. And be it further resolved that the town council awards the assignments as presented to FIG Capital Investments LLC as the bid amount of 105%. I think it's best if Anne Marie...
This is his presentation?
Our tax collector sheet.
Welcome. And again, welcome to Cheshire.
Thank you.
It's great to get someone to come down ill once in a while.
So this is, this is the first time that I had personally done a lien assignment. We could not even prospect. So with the help of Jeffrey and whatever paperwork we could dig out, we managed to put out an RFP and we had two bidders. I had been introduced to FIG probably about a month after I started here in Cheshire. They reached out to me, which I thought was wonderful. And they brought me up to speed on what, you know, what portfolio they have already. They've been purchasing liens from Cheshire since, or getting liens assigned to them since 2017. Quite honestly, when the RFP came in, I was not expecting anything over 100% because I noticed for the past year or two, maybe even longer, it was simply a 100% bid for the assignment. So I was happy to see that both of the bids came in over that. I reached out to the, to three of the towns that Tower Capital Management, who was the second RFP. I reached out to three towns that they listed as references on two separate occasions, and nobody responded to me. So that, you know, I couldn't get a feel for them. The difference between FIG's bid and Tower's bid amounts to, with the list as of May 19th, which can still be reduced if people pay up. It amounts to $3,600. So it's not a huge dollar amount, and I'm comfortable with the FIG system. They have online re, you know, online system that I can check at 24/7 to see where the lien processes are, what payments have been made. The releases come in a timely manner, which is important because once they release the liens that are assigned to them, then payments come directly to us again. So I'm recommending FIG. Past history, relationship, and with this being my first lien assignment, I think it would be better for everybody to go with somebody that we know.
I think as a reminder, we know that this is a hard ball that gets played with this organization. They actually probably set up credit relationships with people to get paid for what has to happen. But we get paid ahead, correct? We basically get paid ahead. They want them.
We will have our payment, I think I set it up for the 22nd of June would be the closing. So before the end of the fiscal year, we're going to be paid for this, which keeps the collection rate up to where it needs to be. There is, they send us copies of correspondence. The initial letter that they send out to people saying, your lien has been assigned to FIG CT, this is where you need to send your payments. They have a local, the attorney that they work with is in Branford, so people can go there. We also will, I will accept certified funds from taxpayers if they don't want to go out to Branford. I get the payoff from the attorney. They send me the certified funds, and they bring me the certified funds, and then I send the certified funds off to them. So it's, it seems like a very easy process. And there are a couple more. I noticed last year that there were less properties. The criteria that I used for the assignment was for real estate if they owed $5,000 or more, and for sewer use if they use, if they owed more than two years of sewer use. Now, I found some of them had three and four years, four years, five years. Not quite sure why they hadn't been on previous lien assignments, but they're on this here. There was also two water assessments that have been outstanding. The liens were placed on those in 2017. I verified with Jeffrey that I was able to include water assessments. So we'll be collecting on that also.
Is there a relationship to real estate taxes with water liens? Is there a connection to a property owner who's back on their taxes for a home and also?
That, there is that one property.
I just wondered if it was a consistency you might expect.
And it's actually, it's actually a developer.
Okay.
Who has not been cooperative with, I've had a few conversations with him in just my short time here, and he just has no intention of paying these liens. So...
And you said that's a developer?
It is.
Do we know if they're doing other development in our town?
And they're paying those. It's just these two properties on Los Farm Road that they, they won't pay the water assessment on. And I don't know the history on that yet. Haven't been able to dig that far into it. So...
I don't understand. Water is not a town, so how does that work?
It's water assessment.
Water assessment. So these were assessed, water assessment was $5,340.40, which has been accruing interest. Typically, when there's a water assessment, people make yearly payments or biannual payments, and it pays it off over a course of some period of time. These actually are the only two outstanding past due.
So regional water, extended water, and then by the town assesses?
The town facilitated water because of problems with wells.
Is that what it was?
For a few homes. And there was seven or eight homes or something. It was a very small number. And leaned it in order to get the fee paid.
Thank you. That was a very helpful presentation. Any other questions from colleagues? Okay. Go on this. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. It goes present.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you, Oliver Person.
Nice to meet you, Oliver Person, yeah.
Okay, we're moving on to five, which is the approval of job descriptions. Again, this is Sylvia's committee.
Okay, we'll start again. Be it resolved that the town council approves Resolution 052323-3. Be it resolved that pursuant to the recommendation of the personnel committee, the town council approves the following job descriptions. Mechanic electrician, operator in training, operator one. Waste water treatment operator one. Waste water treatment operator two. Clinician, substance abuse, and library technology coordinator.
Second.
Okay. Thank you for putting all of these in, in motion. These were upgrades principally to some, some positions. And since we have Gary here, would you like to give us a little update on the ones that have changed to the...
On the top four, yeah.
The top four?
As Gary's settling out, just at the outset, these were all, and many of these were discussed in the budget or, and minimum they were budgetary changes. So these are codifying the changes that were made during the budget. Thank you. The mechanic slash electrician position, right now we currently have an electrician that's part-time. The objective here is to make it a combination position, which allows us more flexibility with the union and just working more efficiently so we don't have to have an operator to turn off a pump when the electrician is doing work on the pump, for example. We have a need for the mechanic position. It's a very unique position as the, as a part-time electrician. I think Greg could honestly go anywhere at any time if he wanted to, and this is a way to keep Greg here. He's a valuable asset to our team, particularly with Francis retiring. And Greg's been working directly under Francis for a couple of years now to transfer a lot of that knowledge that Francis had. So that's the summary for the mechanic electrician position. The operator training position. This is, so Francis is retiring, and instead of replacing this position with like a high-level operator two or three position, we're trying to, and looking at the age of our current staff at the treatment plant, we're trying to establish a succession plan for bringing in younger staff and moving them up the ladder. And this is our, this is the way that we'd like to deal with with this operator training position, where the person would be in this position for, let's say, like up to two years, where they have the opportunity to obtain their CDL, obtain their operator one license, and then start to move up the ladder that way. The operator one and operator two positions, those are not new positions. It's just a modification of an existing position. That's really just clarifying the CDL license that you have to have it and maintain it versus saying you have to have the ability to get the license, but you choose not to maintain it. So that's, that's basically what we're doing there. It's just strengthening that language to allow us to... I mean, they got to have the CDL to operate a handful of the equipment out of the plant.
And just to add to that, too, you mentioned names of particular employees, and in all of these descriptions, we all agreed that currently these are, we're considering it based on these people, but the underlying changes are to make it easier for us to employ other people should be believed. We're not looking at these to just be changed for a particular employee that's currently in the position. So...
That is correct.
Yeah. And that they have been dealt with during the budget process. Any other questions?
I just think that it's, I mean, our wastewater plant is a valued asset to this town, and it's important to make sure we have the right people in the right positions doing this. And I think it makes sense, especially with the electrician mechanic position, to create that position. I happen to know Greg, and I know he's very, very talented, so I think he'll be able to do this job. And hopefully he'll be here for many years to come, and we don't have to worry about trying to find somebody to replace him. But I think it makes sense so that we don't have to go out, like you said, when he's doing electrical work, hiring somebody else to turn off the pump. You know, it makes sense to do that. So I'll fully approve, support these new positions.
Peter, any other comment from, okay.
No.
So the next one is the mental health substance abuse council. We discussed it in budget. It is, thank you, Gary. It is a decision funded by a grant. We discussed it at budget time. It is to be in addition to the counseling support for mental health and abuse issues. Any questions about that? But we need to go into, I'll talk about that. And the third one, or the last one, is the library technology coordinator. We have the library technology coordinator. We're approving that to be entitled Senior Library Associate Technology, which will give this person some supervisory capabilities. It's a huge job to keep track of all the library technology, and this will allow us to have a part-time person come in to help fill out those jobs in the library. Any other comments? Can you sum it up, Sean?
Can I do it?
Yep. Okay.
So any questions?
Any questions?
Call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Oppose present unanimously. Okay, we now move to Sylvia. Approval of amendments to the personnel rules and regulations.
Okay, this one. Be it resolved that the town council approves Resolution 052323-4. Be it resolved that pursuant to the recommendation of the personnel committee, the town council adopts the amendments to the personnel rules and regulations as presented and attached.
Motion. That's Walsh. Thank you. Have discussion.
If you've had a chance to look at it, it's pretty simple. We're changing some language. You have a draft copy that has the actual changes marked in yellow, I think, with your packet. And a lot of it is just verbiage and titles of plans. However, the one substantial change, and if you need further explanation, we can ask Jim, but I'm just going to start out. We're trying to get our 457 and 401 plans even across the board for non-union employees that the union employees have. So this agreement will bring the contribution to the employer contribution to the 457 plan from six to seven percent, and from seven to eight percent, if that, oh, let me go back, from six to seven percent. And if, for 2023, 2223, and seven to eight percent if that employee contributes two percent. And for the, if the other one is... Wait a minute, let me think. I'm confused now. I have to reread this again.
I'm happy to jump in.
Yeah, you jump in this because we, if they do, it's six percent if they include, if they...
Right. So what's happening here, there's two, there's two items that are proposed with personnel rules and regulation updates. One, section 7-12, one is 10-1. 712 is the piece about separations from employment when eligible for a pension and what parameters would be for that employee to be rehired. And that's the clarification the pension attorney asked for that. Section three basically stated that the employee didn't have any agreement that they could be re-employed. The second change in a different section of the personnel rules, as Sylvia was saying, is related to the town's contribution to the 457 plan for non-union employees, right? So they're not governed by a collective bargaining agreement. I know there's a lot of numbers and percentages in there. What I was trying to show is the union contracts for all the police union who have a different plan altogether went last year from six percent to seven percent. And then next year, this coming July, will go from seven percent to eight percent. What's happened is the non-union employees have been sort of left behind. They've stayed at six percent this entire year. So the reason I'm proposing here that we catch everybody up to the same level playing field, I believe strongly we should be treating the non-union employees as the same as the union employees. And in this case, this would be an increase from the six percent to eight percent effective July 1st, at the same time that the union contracts would be doing the same.
Perfectly financial expl, explanation.
We'll have numbers.
Any questions? Sure, question. Sean, the financial impact?
Yep, financial impact, great question, is a total of about, in total, $43,000, but there's about $20,000 already assumed in the budget. We have estimates based on, you know, for retirement section of the budget for when people are going to start, people that are separating, they come back on. So there's always a little bit of movement in that number. But I did have an assumption we would likely move to at least seven percent. And again, with the council's support, it would be an additional $23,000 to go to eight percent. And that's the recommendation.
So you'll find that one.
You can find that one, yes.
Any other questions? Call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we now move along to the call for a public hearing regarding the potential acquisition of 19 Wallingford Road. This is... Be it resolved, the town council approves Resolution 052323-5. Be it resolved, the town council will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, June 13th, 2023, in council chambers, Town Hall, 84 South Main Street, Cheshire, Connecticut, discuss the potential acquisition of 19 Wallingford Road. And be it further resolved, the town manager should cause a notice of said public hearing to be posted and published according to law.
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. It goes present. That's our regular meeting, by the way, our regular next meeting, so.
Or other public hearings.
Okay. So next on the list is appointments to boards and commissions. And I believe we have some business on that matter tonight. With that, let's go.
We do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I appreciate you adding this to the special meeting agenda so that we could get this wrapped up. It is the appointment of Laura Monte to the Environment Commission. It is a new appointment to fill the vacancy of Lynn Dawson. The term of office is 5/23/23 to 1/31/24, and Ms. Monte is a Democrat.
Thank you.
I will second that, Mr. Talbot, and I would like to add a comment if I may.
Please, please.
I, the decision last week was to table that because there was some confusion about the charter regulations. And so I felt that we should be more clear about the exact thing so we were all on the same page. So I've talked with Attorney Genofrio, and we have discussed it. And I just want to be clear for all of you with two things. And, because I will fully support this, and I believe we should support this, we have to support this. But the town, and this is Attorney Genofrio's response. The town charter requires, when an appointed or elected official resigns, the town clerk must notify the chair of the council, town manager, the chair of the board, the board of commission from which the person has resigned, and the chairs of the DTC and RTC. That vacancy shall be filled by the appointment of a member of the same political party as the person vacating the seat through the end of the original term. If the vacancy is not filled within 60 days, the council chair has the authority to fill the vacancy. It still must be filled with someone from the same political party as the member being replaced. Following the end of the new term, a new member may be nominated, or the sitting member may be renominated, both subject to the approval by the town council. Minority representation rules apply to the political party affiliations of the members of the public agencies. So that it's clear. So, but the problem that we ran into is the town clerk has the ultimate responsibility to assure us that the nominating process is followed. And Jeff recommended to us that to avoid future questions about that, and to be very clear, our potential nominations or appointment nominations should be reviewed by the town clerk before they're brought here to be nominated so that we avoid this question.
We've had a few instances.
And we've had a few issues along the way that have been questioning whatever it is. Not necessarily this specific one, but something like that. So that, we wanted to just clarify that it wasn't any political agenda. It was simply to clarify the rules. So we're, I am happy to suggest that we follow through and unanimously approve this.
So we have a motion and a second. So we'll call for a vote on this. All those in favor?
Could you say a question first?
Oh, absolutely. I'm sorry. When we first approved two new members to the Environment Commission that were Democrat members, I was familiar with both of their credentials, and I was comfortable with both of them. So we all voted on a nonpartisan way to support that. I don't know this person, Peter. Could you just tell us a little bit about her background and credentials and why she might be interested in environment?
I, unfortunately, I do not know Laura. Jim, do you know Laura Monte?
I don't know her well enough to speak to her background. Paul's good. She's a member of the Democratic Women's Club, too. And she does speak up at meetings. And I listened to her a couple of times, and she really seems to be extremely intelligent. And she comes with, she just doesn't sit there and listen. She speaks nicely, and I was, if I was raising, would really raise my hand, she'd say the same thing that I was going to say. And I just said, wow, she's very good. I have a nice daddy number.
Thank you.
Just to tell you.
And the last two members that you brought up have been very effective.
Yes.
They've been great.
Yep.
And we always want to do it in the best interest of the town. And I, I'm comfortable with this. If you feel comfortable with her, I just would have, I would have been interested to just know what, you know, what her background might be.
I will, I will get some, I will get some background and forward it to the council.
Actually, that's not a bad idea. Like, any, any, anybody we're appointing, maybe we, I mean, we're just appointing them based on, but, you know, usually the DTC or RTC do, does do the background checks on all of them anyway, so...
And I will continue to support this based on, on just the recommendations of Peter, so. Right. And that committee has certainly been reinvigorated. Reinvigorated, to say the least. No question about it.
Yes.
So with all that said, any further comments? Call for a vote. Opposed, favorite, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, with that, we move to nine. And David, what I'm going to do is I'm going to move over here. You can sit here. I just think it's easier to see. Eh, it's fine. You look good in public.
I don't need to look in public.
I'm just going to move over.
There's cameras all around.
It's a better, it's a better seat. It's a better seat.
No offense. He's making me move. All right. We left off reviewing the capital items as part of the operating budget, but we said making decisions would be held off. I did speak a couple of times with the town manager. I asked Sean to have the Board of Ed and Public Works, as the largest departments, to come. They have some updates for us, mostly with the Board of Ed has some updates. They had a meeting last week, and they voted on some suggested changes. And so what I'd like to do is first hear from them, and then if we still got time, we can talk about some of the items that we want to add or subtract, or if we can go back to our memories of what we, what we talked about during operating budget time. And then we have the public hearing on June 13th. And then I would like to try to gather maybe a chairman's draft that we can review that week or maybe even the week before, subject to public comments. And then we could probably adopt the week after. So maybe around the 20th, we could probably adopt before we all head out for summer break and things like that. So with that, Sean, how did, that's fine. I have, yep. Vin Masiana is here from the Board of Ed. And Vin, I had some, please, good evening. You have some handouts, and I also have your, if you want me to put anything on the screen, I mean, I have what you emailed me earlier, but we'll just kind of see how it goes for every handout.
Yeah, there's one coming both ways. I'll take one, one of each, one each side. I think we play it by ear.
Yeah, that's fine.
Council wants more information. I was going to keep this kind of brief because I know...
Does she got to get home?
No, because you have, you have to deal with all the public works requests.
Well, we've heard, we've got a first call through.
Yeah. So there's, there's two items that I wanted to bring up tonight. One is an update, and one is a new request. So we'll start with the new request, which, it's going to have a paperclip on it. And it's titled Mutual Length School and Town Security Improvement Project. Everybody with me?
Yep.
So this is a, it's a brand-new request... So this is a, it's a brand-new request that is really coming jointly from the Cheshire Public Schools and the Cheshire Police Department. We had done a review several years back of a technology solution called Mutual Link, and then Chief Drive brought it back to the school's attention a couple of months ago. We met with, with the providers of Mutual Link. And essentially, what it does is it's a software hardware combination that's installed in the police dispatch center, and what it does is it allows police dispatch to view all the school floor plans on their system, overlaid with video cameras. It allows for enhanced communication between all emergency responders and school officials. It also ties in different types of alarms, such as panic alarms. The, the Mutual Link product is endorsed by the state of Connecticut. There is a school security grant that is specialized for this type of solution. The schools, we did submit a grant application on April twenty-eighth. If approved, it would reimburse fifty percent of the cost of the installation of this product. I will add that it is location-specific, so this covers the eight schools, but if there were additional installations that, you know, the police department and businesses in town wanted to be incorporated, they could do that. This is just to connect essentially police, first responders, and the school side. We do have quite a bit of the infrastructure in place, like the school security cameras are already in place. The ability to view the cameras is already there with the police department, but Mutual Link ties this floor plan in, and it makes it a lot easier, and it's, it's an important component. You know, we have about three hundred cameras installed in the schools, it would be a lot easier for the police dispatch to see what was happening in a particular school by just looking at a location and, and clicking on the icon for the camera. This was reviewed by our school district task force, which includes, you know, members of police, our chief of police, our two SROs, Jack Kazner as the emergency official for the town, and our fire chief, as well as some of the school administrators. So everyone from the district task force is on board with doing this. The, the reason it's on the capital budget is because it's a two-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand-dollar request before the, the security grant reimbursement. We'll know whether or not we've been approved for the security grant, probably somewhere around late summer, let's call it September. This is round six of school security grants that the state's made available. We've got money in the first five rounds, and I imagine we would be approved for this one, but I don't know yet.
Question, how does this relate to the new schools? Now, is this system something that can be expanded when the new schools, obviously, are gonna have heightened technology built in, but this software will connect to them as well?
It will, and I, what I don't know is, is, are some of the components transferable? Because after the new schools are built, we'll be down to seven buildings instead of the eight. But yes, you can add on additional facilities to the new system.
Obviously, the way technology is today, it could be very different by the time those schools are built, anyway. I mean, in three years or four years, there may be different upgrades to bring into the things.
Yeah, but again, what this does really is it bridges all the different components of our security systems and makes it really available, you know, for police and first responders.
Is this mostly a software plan, because we already have the hardware in place?
It's mostly software and integration of the different pieces of software.
Since Sylvia brought it up with the new schools, I mean, are we gonna be investing money into, to getting the cameras and stuff, or, or are they already in place at Chapman?
That's what I'm saying.
So we don't have, we don't have to invest in hardware, this is strictly a software plan, which is, which is, just briefly looking at it, looks great, but yeah.
It's mostly, there's, there are some hardware components just to make it work in each, in each data closet, but that piece is minor. So the new schools will have security cameras, and they will have door access systems.
They'll be more safer.
Probably superior to what we have currently, but they will be able to tie in.
Okay.
What are the operational costs on an annual basis? This isn't one, this isn't a one-time.
Yeah, no, it isn't, it is an annual, there is an annual fee associated with this.
Thirty-two thousand a year, or no?
And that's for, for location?
Yeah, per location, yeah. It's thirty-two, yeah, nine per school.
Right.
I will have to get back.
That's fair enough.
To the council on the ongoing costs.
What's the timeframe for, is this something that'll be done over the summer, if we approve this?
Couple of months, from beginning to end, is what they tell us.
Schools in session, so if we approve this.
All happening in the background.
Okay.
Is there any training required by the school system?
That's, that's part of what's included in the cost, and yeah, there will definitely be training that will be required, and again, mostly on the police dispatch side, because they are the ones that are the key operators of the system.
So this would be like for a timely response to an incident in the school system? Like if they're trying to locate somebody, they can click on cameras? This isn't the post-use after something's happened?
No, this is in, in, an emergency event is triggered, it gives the first responders greater insight and greater capability to communicate.
Okay, okay.
That's important.
They can see what the people on the school can say. Gotcha.
Are there cameras in every classroom, too?
Not inside classrooms.
Not just, just in hallways?
Hallways, the common spaces, gyms and cafeterias. Some, some of the larger spaces, like some of the labs, may have some cameras, but for the most part, not inside each classroom.
Then, do we have detection devices on doors, say that if the door is left open or something, that somehow the system is alerted that there's a door in a certain area that's been left open?
No.
That's a good point. Let's, let's be more general and not too specific to the public as to how our safety protocols are.
No, no, I'm just asking if, it's something that we should have.
I mean, we do certainly have door coverage, but not all events are necessarily gonna be reported.
Right. I'm just curious, why, why, why is this available? Is this something new, is this in other schools in, in the state, or are they just?
Yeah, yeah, it's not new. It's something that we looked at probably, it was certainly before the pandemic, and, you know, frankly, the demo we saw several years ago was not as sophisticated, and it was not as impressive and, and user-friendly as it is today.
Is that why we're bringing it forward now, I mean, because we're seeing, we think it's at the same.
It's improved, yeah. And again, it's, it's, it's something that, you know, the schools would benefit from, but the police have to, you know, be on board to control it, so, and they are.
And it's before us because the elected school board recommended it.
Not, then notwithstanding Mutual Link's inability in their presentation to spell the name of our town drive. The, in the, in the quote itself, it does refer to no additional charges for three years.
I just wanna confirm.
So, yeah, if there is an annual.
If there is anything annual.
If there is an annual fee, whether, you know, whether this is accurate, that this is a, you know, kind of a three-year contract, and then you renew, or, you know, upgrade or something, or change, change software or whatever.
I will represent this as, you know, certainly the maximum cost for one year. We need to go back on, on some of the pricing, but I wanted to get it in front of the council, you know, as soon as I.
Yeah, and again, there, you know, it may, there may be some grant offset, too, so.
Yeah, and I could provide the updated information. I know you're not voting tonight on the Capitol, but so we'll have some time. Any other questions?
All right, thank you on that, and next, your next item.
So the next item, it, it is an update of an item in the capital budget for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year, just the level set. We have put in an item called elementary classroom expansion of three hundred thousand, and then in year two, two hundred fifty thousand. And the reason for that is we are a little bit concerned about running out of room in our elementary schools before the three years in which the new schools will be open are completed. So in the fall, the planning committee of the board, you know, did an R F P, and ultimately engaged a firm called Antonazi Associates to do a review, and we selected two schools, Highland and Doolittle, because we think those will be the first two that potentially will run out of space for student classrooms. And they, they just completed their study, a presentation was made to the Board of Ed at their meeting Thursday night. More work needs to be done. This was just a study to identify, are there spaces inside those two schools that can be converted to usable space? And if we did need to install portable classrooms, trailers, however you prefer to call them, I do call them portable classrooms, now to remind everybody they're supposed to be there and not stay permanently. So I, I provided, I believe Sean emailed the council members the full report, it's about thirty-seven pages, but I just provided the executive summary and the cost data page on this document. So I wanna, if you can turn to, it's the third page in on the back, up at the top, it says Cheshire, Doolittle, portable, option one and two. Before I go through the numbers, I want to explain, this is a kind of a worst-case scenario cost, assuming we had to add four portable classrooms. The reason I say it's worst case is because this is assuming we're purchasing four portable classrooms and then having them installed on, you know, either Doolittle or Highland, which we have cost estimates for both. We don't have to purchase them necessarily, there are lease options, you know, there are, there may be rental options of some portables that are in use at other school districts temporarily, that are, that are, they're finished with, for example, South Windsor, you know, I, I learned from Antonazi Associates, they just released a couple of their portable classrooms, so they can be repurposed. But when they're repurposed, there's a, a cost to either buy, lease, or rent, and then there's a fixed cost, no matter what you do, new or used, to basically prepare the site, pour a pad, you know, arrange for utilities, electric at a minimum, and then if you're gonna include bathrooms, then you need, obviously, plumbing. So you're kind of with that as a backdrop, the estimate for Doolittle, that at the top, if we were to install four portable classrooms with no toilets, you'll see over up at the top on the far right, it's about a million, two thousand dollars. Of that, seven hundred forty-five thousand is the purchase of brand-new portables, and then a hundred sixty-six thousand is basically the site prep and installation. So if you used a hundred sixty-six thousand as your assumption for four, and we were able to, you know, get these at a lower price, let's say you can buy some used ones at, you know, four hundred thousand, then your cost in is five hundred sixty-six thousand. The reason the planning committee went through this exercise is because, you know, we're not sure we're gonna need these, but I think we probably will. And, you know, I will kind of give you some updates on Highland's enrollment. When we started this school year, we had eight hundred thirty-eight students. We are currently at about eight hundred fifty students, and projected for next year, we're at eight seventy-eight. However, this is before this little increase that we saw recently, so, you know, we are pretty much at capacity at Highland now. We've done a couple of things over the past two years in order to make more room at Highland, and I'll talk about Doolittle in a second as well. But we've, you know, moved some of our programming so that we can have full classrooms that weren't previously used as classrooms. This summer, we're already preparing, we have a room off the library that has basically been used as a small resource room, you know, that's being, you know, converted to be used as classroom space. We're also taking some of the smaller resource areas that we have, they're three to four hundred square feet, and just making some temporary walls in the large corridors where we have opportunities to have those students, so we could free up classroom space. At Doolittle, what we did last year is we converted a computer lab that we were using, that we're no longer using because the students have Chromebooks on carts, and we converted that into two rooms that are used by our counselors, who were previously in a classroom. So we freed up the classroom, you know, by, by making these amendments to the space. So we're gonna continue to do that, and we'll get through the next school year, we'll get through twenty-three, twenty-four. If the enrollment continues to increase to Highland and Doolittle, we will not have enough classroom capacity. The other thing that I wanted to tell you related to Highland is that the new units that are being built on Dickerman Ave, those are supposed to be in Highland, you know, Dr. Solon already notified the realtors that, that those, any students that, you know, occupy those townhouses will go to Chapman, they have a little bit of room in Chapman, not much, so we're trying to do everything we can to use the space that we have. It's really not an opportunity to just redistrict, because all, you know, four of the elementaries are pretty full, Highland and Doolittle being the largest concerns. One of the things, and I'll end at this point, is when we get to September, I think we'll have a better idea of where enrollment will be. I know some of the, the rental apartments on Hazel, I think will be coming online. You know, the prediction is pretty, pretty low student count, but that's also a Highland zone, you know, and if some of these townhouses on Dickerman become occupied, I think in the fall, we'll have a kind of a better handle on where we might be, but we're gonna struggle, I think. Kind of the good news is that people are moving to town, or students are, are getting moved into town. The bad news is, we need to find a place to put them between now and twenty-twenty-six. So we're trying to get ahead of the curve here. So with that said, the, what I wanted to bring to the table is we have three hundred thousand for next year, two fifty the following year. Probably not enough based on this cost estimate, even if we were able to, you know, lease or rent portables for less. So I don't have a number to recommend necessarily, but, you know, I, I will come back to the council, you know, with, with a number, so.
What's the lead on, on obtaining these, whether they're leased, or you've got pads to be built, like you said, all connections, what, what kind of notice do you have to get up?
I mean, realistically, I think we need about six months.
Okay.
But again, the, the desire is, you know, if this gets, it has to be approved by the council in this capital budget, so that we can start working and have them in place the following summer.
So it's for next summer that you're trying to get ahead of? And you need planning and zoning approval to put these in as well?
Yeah.
You do?
And in the, in the full recommendation, you'll see that there's sites selected based on the work that Antonazi did. So we have a couple of different places, at Doolittle, Highland, it's really only one place where the existing two portables are, it's, it's the only real viable option.
I mean, I, it sounds like you're doing everything you can, and it's, you know, we'll see how, how these apartments, what they do in terms of generating, if there's children, typically should not do more, maybe the housing that you talked about earlier, which is more housing, you know, is gonna generate more. I, for one, without knowing more detail, would be uncomfortable moving towards purchase, given the way we're spending for new schools, and would look towards, you have plenty of time to reach out, to look for opportunities to lease or purchase used or something, as opposed to, but that would be my just gut reaction, Vin, as I, as I consider this. You have, you know, we have to house our students, but hopefully, we don't wanna spend this kind of money while we're building two new schools, and hopefully, when we build two new schools, we won't need that, that would be our objective, so.
It's just a.
new schools, we won't need that, that would be our objective, so, it's just a initial.
I hear you, John, I don't disagree. This is kind of the worst-case scenario from a cost perspective, you know, we can put the word out to vendors that specialize in these modulators and that have installed them in schools to let us know if they have anything coming off lease. There are, you know, I know there's one town resident who works for Box Modular, who a couple of years ago had said, hey, we have, you know, a portable coming off lease in Hamden, you know, which is really close, because obviously, there's a cost to transport the portables. We didn't need them at the time. So, we can, my point is, we could get the word out to let vendors know that we'd be interested if anything is coming off lease, I'll let my school business official buddies know as well, because we have a pretty good listserv. So, we can try and get ahead of it that way.
Just a quick thing, I agree with John. I mean, one of the things when we were talking about the school modernization is, we don't want the portable buildings, and I understand the need for them, because this proves, this is why we're building two elementary schools, we, there's a big need for that in this town. But if we do get the portables, you know, and the new schools are built, now we have all these portables, and will those be dismantled, or will we be leasing them out to, selling them out to somebody else, like these other places? Because, you know, I think that the last thing we want is, especially for school safety, we need these portable units, and I think, you know, it's important to understand that, you know, the people in this town are spending a lot of money for it to build these schools, if we have to spend a lot of money to still buy portable units, I think they'd have a tough time with that, but, I mean, we have to put the students on our cell. I mean, we, we're, we're not going to have much of a choice in that matter, but if we can get them leased, and we know that we have at least a year to start looking, you know, if something comes up in six months and we snag them, I mean.
Yeah, I, listen, I, I, I agree.
Yeah.
This is, this is a not place, you know, for us to be, that, you know, we, we know that we got approval for two new schools, and the last thing, you know, we want to do is add portables. Now, this, the planning committee, after they received this report, the planning committee is scheduled to meet in early June to go through the report in more detail, we do have the associates from Antonazi coming back. There might be other alternatives, you know, such as, you know, finding some space nearby, but that doesn't mean it's a good alternative, because now you'll have students in two different buildings. I mean, there's no easy answer here, and I certainly don't have all the answers, but, you know, being, trying to be ahead of this gives us an advantage. I'd hate to be, you know, here at this time next year saying, uh-oh.
How far ahead are the projections, are the numbers compared to what the projections were? Or are they on par?
No, we're up, like, if you just look from this, from Nesdaq's spring projection to today, we're up about forty-one students, that's just from March to October, and so they upped the projection for next year by fifty-one students. Now, that's, that's, that is total across the district.
Right.
We're not that far off from the SLAM projections, but they do seem to be concentrating at Highland especially, and to a lesser extent at Doolittle, and so that's, that's part of the issue that we're, we're struggling with, that's why we're trying to.
And the units at the north end, they would go to where normally? The new units that are coming, that are coming up on the north end, the students that come from those?
I'm sorry, Tom.
The students that come, come in from the projects at the north end project, Lynn Stonebridge. Yes, it was Stonebridge, yeah, and the, yeah. Where would they normally go, where they just, in Highland? But you're saying people that are coming into the new units on the west side of the river are going to?
Chapman.
And you can just do that?
The superintendent can.
Yeah.
There's more room there.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that makes sense.
Yeah, we, we put the word out for those families to know. Now, you know, the, the good news for those families is, in three years, they'll have, they'll be in new schools, assuming their students are still in those, those schools, yeah. So, this is a temporary solution.
And there's, okay. Here's a question a town council person can ask. I, I read a quote from Dr. Solan that, you know, we couldn't, we couldn't tolerate, parents in this town wouldn't tolerate overcrowded classrooms. So, does this, and I, and I think they could tolerate a lot of stuff, but you are obviously trying to maintain a certain level of classroom size, correct?
Yes.
Right. And, and I know that for the dunces in this room, that, you know, we're crammed with thirty other people, you know, it's very different than today, and I know there's aides in classrooms, there's all kinds of stuff, but do you really know what parents, or you can pass this one to Jeff, could tolerate? Or is it just something that, I mean, can we, can we survive with a few more kids in a classroom? I mean, I, I just think it's a fair question.
Yeah, I, I'll answer it this way.
Yeah, right.
That if we look at for next year, this year's an elementary only, we're at about eighteen point eight students per class.
Mm-hmm.
For next year, based on the projection, we're going to keep it at eighteen point eight students. And the question is, can we increase that? And the answer is, we can, but, you know, it comes at an educational cost.
Right.
However, when we look at the average, and this is, you know, an important thing that we also look at, is in the lower grades, if you look for next year, again, we're at eighteen point eight, in the lower grades, like kindergarten is seventeen point one, grade one is seventeen point seven, but you look at grade six, we're at twenty point seven. And some of the, some of the sixth-grade classrooms, like at Doolittle, will have classes of twenty-two and a class of twenty-three. So, it's, it's not like every classroom is at that eighteen point eight.
And I figured.
So, as we go forward.
Maybe the older ones are better equipped.
If we are really tight, and we do not have a portable, and we have to have some twenty-threes and twenty-fours, and, and twenty-fives really has been the upper limit since I've been here, where we would have it in our elementary. Little different in the middle school, in the middle school, we're at, you know, twenty-six and twenty-four, I think, in grade seven next year.
Right.
So, there is a sensitivity by grade.
Yeah.
But yeah, can we squeeze more kids in to get through? Like, we can, but there is a tolerance, and I don't want to speak for Dr. Solan.
No, I, I know, I know, but I read, I read the quote, and, you know, I heard, you know, I read that parents wouldn't tolerate that, and he may be correct, I'm not always a reader of everybody in the same school. So, anyway, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Demonstrates that you do have some crowding in some of the schools, so, classes.
Yeah, and I believe it's in, in the report that Antonazi issued as well, if you look at the whole thing, but they did basically a litmus test to see, based on the square footage of the school, is mathematically, using the state standard, are we at capacity? And the answer trued up to where we, where we come up at. We knew Highland is the most of the area, and Doolittle has a little bit more room than Highland.
You didn't give the numbers, Joe, so.
I was going to ask, are these units pretty much the same, similar size to what's already at the Highland right now? Is that what you said?
They're similar size, and the ones at Highland do have bathrooms right now, and you could see that we did obtain, you know, pricing with them and without.
And how many, so how many students would one of these units fit?
It'll fit a full classroom, you could get twenty-three, twenty-four students in there.
Okay. The anticipation wouldn't be that the same class would be in that temporary structure all day long, right?
You know, that's a decision to be made, so.
First graders don't move, they don't switch classrooms, right, to go to lunch?
Yeah.
Yeah, there, that, that's a decision that has to be made, because you could use some of these portables to do like art or music, and then take the art and music room that's inside the building and make that, you know, a grade classroom.
Right.
So, that's a decision that has to be made.
So, the ones at Norton's are like forty years old, right?
Yes.
They can get fifty kids in those.
In, in the old days, maybe.
My kids went through those.
Did they?
State reimbursement says here, we don't know what we might get out of that, or?
If we go, we may be able, I, I'm sorry I didn't bring that up, but there may be state reimbursement eligibility depending on how we do the trailers and whether or not they're permanent. They don't have to be permanent to get state reimbursement, but that's a whole level of detail I need to uncover.
And that's a sensitive issue, isn't it? Some of that trailer stuff associated with.
Just sounding the alarm is what you're doing.
No, I'm just trying to get ahead of the curve, so that we don't run out of room and have to scramble.
Well, you know what would help me and the rest of us? What is your recommendation for increasing the budget that was projected at three hundred thousand, I think you said?
It's three hundred and then two fifty for next year.
Okay, so what is your recommendation?
I'll have to come back.
Oh, wow. Because I know that's, that's, that's really what we need to know.
Yeah.
That's David to chase you down.
Well, I, I have a, a little bit different take. I'm, I'm not very amenable to considering temporary for two years, spending this kind of money when we have down the road. And a predecessor of Dr. Solan, well, we had other issues in the past, would say that sometimes having a classroom that has a couple extra kids but has an aide in it is more helpful, because then they can do small group work in one side and one side of the classroom, and then the majority of the kids can stay, and especially with the mainstreaming and all, there sometimes are already aides in there, I'm not telling you anything you don't already know. I'm inclined to say that I would rather see those mitigations worked on than this, but that's just me.
We could do both. I mean, you know, I think we need to be prepared that.
No, and I appreciate that you brought this up to us, and then we will have a decision to make, but I, I'd like to see some of those other ideas that were solid ideas twenty years ago that has not changed that much.
But didn't you also say, not to cut you short, David, but didn't you also say four was the top of the, the top of the list?
If, if we did four, we don't have to, you know, it may not be four, it may be two. Some of the costs, some of the infrastructure costs to get there are still.
Because you got, if I'm, you got four portables potentially going into Doolittle, and four going.
Two in each, right?
Four in each.
Four in each.
Yeah, four in each.
This is why I didn't come, I didn't, I'm not asking for two million dollars. I don't know what the number is at, this is kind of breaking news, I do, the planning committee does need to weigh in.
That's a lot of classrooms.
Yeah.
Norton's had two for fifty years. And I do think we have to have a little bit experience with how many school-aged children come out of these new developments, because we just don't know.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And maybe worse than we thought, but I, I, my gut is it's going to be less than we think.
Yeah, I mean, if that's the case, you know, we, we may be able to get by with just a couple at Highland on a temporary basis, and it makes this, you know, a lot more tolerable and a lot, a lot easier on all of us, but trust me, it's not easy on me either, right? You have to approve the money, but we have to try and figure out the logistics here.
Do the shell game.
Yeah.
Vin, where do you guys stand with, with use of ARPA money, and is there a consideration to use ARPA by the board for anything capital over the next year or two?
We have about four hundred thousand dollars of, of ARPA sort of money remaining, and it's paid for next year.
Okay. And it's earmarked for a specific.
Four forty, yeah.
The way enhancements you did.
Okay.
Yeah, so, we, and as a school district, you know, the total that we received was a little over two million, and roughly half of that was spent just on, you know, health and safety initially, so, we didn't receive all that, that much as a district, and we tried to stretch it out as far as we could, so we'll get one more year out of it. Good thinking, though, I think, yeah.
It's worth an ask.
Yeah. So, again, I, I will come back to the council with some further detail and recommendations.
All right, thank you. Appreciate the update. No other updates the other direction, though?
Well, no.
Oh, we don't need this.
No, David.
I have to ask.
No, I did look, I did look.
Yeah, I'm sure.
You know, we, we tried to, to bring it down to just the what we really need.
Yeah.
And it's all building, maintenance type items.
It is, I mean, we, we looked at it, I don't think, well, we have been here, are there any questions?
Well, that was going to be my question, again, we focused mostly on the operating budget during the budget workshop, but there was some discussion of capital, and I know everyone's had the documents, but if there's other questions on, I think in particular those fifteen, about fourteen or fifteen first-year items, now would be a good time to.
Yeah, in the.
For the board of ed.
We call it.
Page two forty something.
Yeah, probably easiest to see in two forty, two forty.
Right.
Yeah, two forty is the.
Yes.
Page.
Oh.
I didn't either. And if you need, there's a spare here, there's a share down there.
Do you have?
I can also pull up on the screen, that's easier.
You, you have, yeah, you have that, that's right.
Give me the page again, Sean.
Sorry, two forty-four, it, remember, in the Board of Ed side, they're broken up into three kind of programmatic areas, roof replacements, code compliance, and renovation. This year, there's, it's really the renovation projects are the bulk of the request.
Yeah, the spreadsheet's two forty, two forty-one, and two forty.
Right, and then, again, on page two fifty is when you'd have the full.
Yeah, the detail, so.
Of the, sorry, the renovation items.
Yeah.
I keep in mind, I do have to come back, so.
Yeah, we can, we can cover those next time.
Yeah, we.
There we go.
There's also a good summary on page one forty-three, where you could see everything on one, one page.
Yes. Yeah, but that's, yeah, I think we're probably ready, it'll be the two fifty and two fifty-one with the details.
And also, now it's probably a good, I'll, I'll pass out the draft in public hearing notice, this also summarizes all first-year projects as presented in my budget. So, again, I know, part of what we're doing tonight is, it's been two, over two months since this was pulled together, so there's updates, but this is kind of a snapshot of all first-year projects as recommended in the town manager's budget.
One thing, as you're passing this out, you may all recall that planning and zoning asked that we pull in by one year to the current year, the plan of conservation and development, so that's not.
So, that would be on this list, right? This list is really as of March tenth, is a good way to put it.
Yeah.
And there will be.
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah.
I can talk about the two biggest items on the page.
Okay.
The seven hundred fifty thousand, that's our largest request, and that is to continue the window replacement project at Cheshire High School.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we're, and, and the council has been good about approving, you know, two fifty to five hundred thousand per year. We're starting to see some of the windows that were installed about twenty-five years ago on the north side of the building are starting to fail. This is not, this is still to, you know, continue and replace mostly the original windows in the building, so we, we are asking to, you know, increase the allotment this year. I know that, that would have to go to referendum, it's a continuing referendum, I'm pretty sure it was on last year, but maybe not.
If we were to come up with, I know we did walls and window walls and stuff like that, and we had some sense of what was being covered with the money, what, what will seven hundred fifty thousand buy basically at the high school?
Will we replace a, what, seven fifty? I can't give you a, a number without going back and pulling some data for you.
That's fair.
Yeah, we have time.
But I, but I know that we did do, I don't know what the money cost, but I thought we did that south-facing wall at the old part of the high school up and forth.
We did.
That's all done.
Yeah, except, well, this summer, no, it's, it's not, that's not all done, it will be done this summer, including the storefront to the old main office is being replaced this summer.
Okay.
So, I'll, I'll come back with specifics on that.
Yeah, because I, I think it's almost time for a little color, color graph that says what walls have done, because there's a lot of glass, we know that.
We, we could certainly provide that, and, you know, the way the allocations have been coming, we, you know, go to the architect and say, this is what we have, we prioritize based on works first, and get, and we do sections at a time, so.
Yeah, yeah, right.
You know, so I'll come back with that, and then the second one, the second largest is six hundred thousand dollars, that is new, that is the boiler replacements at Dodd Middle School. We have two boilers on the Park Place side, they're a little over twenty years old, but they are definitely failing, and there's a concern that if we don't replace them, you know, we, we may lose one or two, and it's, you know, deteriorated enough that we had to use some boilers cement to keep the thing running. And it's, you know, deteriorated enough that we had to use some boilers cement to keep the thing running. Part of the problem in that area was that the years it was subject to pretty high humidity, you know, we, we've remedied that. So we think that that accelerated the failure of those boilers. So, you know, typically with the boilers, we, we prepare for them a few years in advance. This one, you know, really came up kind of, kind of quickly.
That would get done in a year, that would get done this summer? No, it's.
No, it'll get done next, next summer, but we've already.
That's all the planning money and everything, design money included in that?
We were already out to design on it.
Okay.
Yeah, because we just want to try and get it done as quickly as we can.
What's the typical lifespan of one of these? Like the new ones that you're putting in, are they twenty-five years?
I think twenty-five years, I don't know, John, if you have a better number. I mean, we've, we've kept some of the boiler plants running, you know, for three decades. Like the ones we replaced at, at Doolittle, you know, those were, you know, over thirty years old.
This is the Dodd, the, the section, the new section with the, that's old enough now.
So do you typically start looking at them at twenty years, saying, putting them on the five year plan, saying, okay, we're good, okay? But these just happen to be.
We started having some, some issues last year, and then it was discovered that the boilers are really in not good condition.
There's no reimbursement for that, is there?
No.
Just like at home.
Yeah, but you get some energy credits if you get the right kind.
Well, sometimes we do get some, some incentives for the boiler replacements.
Like a hundred thousand dollars worth?
We'll look into that, around a hundred.
Any other questions?
And then the other ones are, you know, things like the Mason District sidewalk and masonry repairs. Those are just ongoing improvements, the lab improvements. All the others are just, you know, projects that we continue to need to maintain the buildings, except we already talked about the elementary classroom expansion of three hundred thousand, so I'm sure you don't want to hear any more about that. Tonight, anyway.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Dan.
All right, thank you.
You record your follows.
Do you have another meeting set up, or are you gonna do that?
Well, we have the public hearing on the thirteenth. I was thinking if we would see if everybody's calendars were available on the sixth. I think next week's too soon, especially with the holiday, to have gotten much done. But to keep it to Tuesdays, if we could have another budget workshop to review things on the sixth. We'll hear what the public has to say on the thirteenth and hopefully vote on the twentieth. That calendar work for most people, hopefully everybody?
I won't be on the sixth, but.
Tuesdays are tough.
Can you zoom in? I mean, we could, if you were here. Okay. What was that?
I, I, I'm not sure that June's Tuesdays are, might be tight for me, but I could check my calendar, see what I could do.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you do have public works.
Sure.
Okay.
Fewer updates.
Rearranged the furniture, that's all.
You're part of this.
I'm here for you. Is that gonna be okay?
I'm fine.
It's good. Oh, yeah, I'm covering the table tonight.
All right, so public works is one ninety-six and one ninety-seven is the spreadsheet.
I love the big book. Right, it means we. And, right, of the, of the, oh, you've got golden, golden, red? And we did review and present these in a little more detail during the budget process. But this is again, part of this is again a follow-up, about a little over two months have passed. Few items not dissimilar from what Ben was just presenting. One in particular, well, a couple of culvert projects that we want to talk to you about tonight, too, that are not in this requested budget, but that we have to make some decisions about. Namely, the Industrial Avenue Culvert, a project you'll recall we funded now a year plus ago. And we have, well, and I'll, I'll turn it to our public works friends to give the full explanation. But as you'll recall, bridge and culvert projects are subject to the state fifty percent grant program. As part of the final design, the total cost estimate for those projects is significantly up. And part of the challenge we have here is, if you recall, we appropriated eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars for that culvert project on Industrial Avenue. Fifty percent share would have been half of eight hundred and sixty, right? So four hundred and thirty thousand, give or take, was what was going to be applied for and is being applied for. However, the final design numbers have come in at a higher amount, north of a million, which then means the town's share is above five hundred thousand dollars, which now is also a referendum item, which was not the first time we ever went. So that's a quick synopsis, but I don't know if either Gary or Dan, I think Dan, you were handling that one a little bit.
Yeah, I've got that one. Working with town engineer, consultant town engineer, or consultants from SLR, Key Shore Patel. They've completed the design permitting through the DOT and associate agencies, and have what's the supplemental application, which is the final phase of submitting for the local bridge program to the state of Connecticut. As part of that, they have to sharpen the pencil, provide final design numbers, cost for construction. Unfortunately, in the term from twenty twenty-one to where we are today, the cost of construction is greatly increased from the numbers that we were looking at, and as Sean mentioned, pushes the number above a referendum item, requiring this to, to come to the council for consideration for, including a referendum in order for us to continue forward this project. We do have to have the approval through referendum in order to do the final application process, which would push the project through into the twenty twenty-four construction season. With that, the numbers anticipated for those twenty twenty-four construction season have to be considered. So they're a little bit higher than even what they would have anticipated should we have construction this year in order to protect the town from having a shortfall when we do go to construction. The, the total anticipated construction cost with contingencies is one million, three hundred fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars, providing us with a local municipal share of six hundred and fifty, seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And I did provide Sean with a brief demo, I could pass that around, and everybody can have a copy, just for your references. And this did come, you know, obviously late for including a referendum for the capital budget. But it is something that is a necessary improvement, is a fifty percent funding through the state. And we recommend seeing this through.
That's heavy duty traffic on there.
Well, Industrial Avenue, Culvert is, is south of, of, you know, the Bezuro's entrance. It doesn't necessarily get the highest amount of traffic, but the, the Culvert in places in extreme disrepair and needing to be addressed.
We also separately, if you recall, had funded a full road reconstruction of that project. This is why, this is sort of in two parts, because you wouldn't, we have to repair.
We could do one or the other, we can't do both of them at the same time. The original anticipation was for the construction of the Culvert in this year. Now we're, we're looking at kind of redirecting and potentially looking to bid out for the, the road reconstruction portion of this project in advance in order not to push everything out two years.
Right, so what, what waterway is that then?
It's a, no, it's an unnamed.
Oh, it's, it's a water course, not temporary, it's just a water course.
It is a water course, it's an unnamed water course.
Okay. So it makes no difference, we care about all waters.
We care about all. Crossing the track over it and, and making sure that we actually have passages, it's really the critical thing to consider here. The end walls are, are, are in disrepair and failure at this point.
So it's gonna be one of those arch types.
This is gonna be a three sided box, Culvert.
Okay, gonna be three sided box.
So what you're, you're looking for is it's supposed to send, send us the referendum to.
This will have to go to referendum because of the local share.
Right, you need an additional appropriation of, I believe it's about four, one hundred and eighty, thirty, four hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Will we lock in at that price once, because, I mean, what happens if it goes up again?
It has to go out to bid, and, and that's where we, we sat down with Key Shore and, and his team, and we discussed the, the avenue that, that we're at now, which is this does have to go to referendum. There isn't an opportunity for us to see construction this year. So the numbers that they provided us are in consideration for inflation costs.
Okay, so there is inflation, correct?
This is the location. Correct.
Okay, yep. There's water, right?
Sometimes you cross over and you don't even realize you're crossing it.
Yeah.
Important, and they're.
A lot of trees.
They're also expensive.
It's really unfortunate, but that, that end of the road doesn't really get, you know, it's mixed traffic. It's going.
It's all heavy.
Unless you. Unless you dead end it.
Awesome option. All right. How would our business friends that are up at that other part of the road feel if we were to dead end it, just to ask? I mean, what, do they go through it to get out to Rutan?
They don't need to, primarily Bezuro's trucks are primarily.
Well, they're fine, yeah, it's, but I forgot one, the, those other buildings there, but, those other buildings there, that's not heavy industrial.
Place a fire would, no, no.
I'm not sure this one is presently occupied.
You don't want to dead end anything in an industrial area. It's just, that doesn't make sense.
At one point, if I recall correctly, it was a cul-de-sac at one point, and it's a, it's a street.
I think you're right, I think you're right. It's unfortunate that it's that expensive. Yellow, Key Shore, right?
Yeah.
Right, so that's.
And those are based on current costs that they, they've experienced in recent projects that they've involved.
James Gates, sorry, against her. Other questions regarding this topic? All right, what other updates do we have regarding public works?
So we can start with, I mean, probably easier to go through, I mean, obviously, I think roads, road paving program is always a topic of conversation. This year, we've also talked a little bit about sidewalks, sidewalk repairs and extensions. So we've been having some staff conversations about, particularly with sidewalks prioritization, and we've received some questions about, there's also on our radar, I think we did discuss in prior meeting, with the new school going into Jarvis and Marion, there are sidewalk extension possibilities. They're not in this first year budget proposed, but something that I think the council should start to think about and consider how you'd like sidewalks. Because typically our standard when we review sidewalks, and again, I don't want to steal the thunder of our public works friends here, but within a quarter mile or so of a, of a school, particularly when those students are required to walk to school, are obvious places that we start in terms of prioritization for sidewalks. Looking at, again, Jarvis and Marion, particularly Jarvis, connected down past Strollo Court and to Dundee, really, is a, is a stretch that I know the council's had a lot of thought around. That's an item that we can discuss as either putting in an appropriation, either in the first year, put it in the second year. We have some degree of time, but I just would point out that in that conversation with sidewalks and prioritizing, both those we've already been considering, and also the repair of the existing sidewalks. We know we have a pretty extensive sidewalk network, and those have a defined useful life, and, and they need repairs, and they shift and settle, and that's another piece that, you know, we, we actively try to maintain those sidewalks and get them repaired, of course. And that council's been very good to fund. And we have an existing account of, with a decent balance for sidewalk repairs. You'll notice in the budget, I actually hadn't funded, even though there was a request for sidewalk repairs. That's something that we could see fit to restoring. There was a request for two hundred fifty thousand, but as I was prioritizing the budget, I didn't fund it, only given some of the account balances as they stood in March. I know some of those were then drawn on to do some recent projects this spring, so that's another item. Maybe at the next meeting, we can come back with some thoughts around. But I know, again, roads and sidewalks was a topic that I assumed you'd want to talk through a little bit.
Well, I'm concerned, I'll, I'll start out the conversation on the sidewalks, and sure, I'm concerned that we have a hundred fourteen miles of sidewalks, and there's no, nothing in here for maintaining them, nothing that closes the loops other than special projects like Cheshire Street sidewalks. There are still loops to be closed, there are gonna be more loops now that we have a new location of a new school. We want to, you know, be able to connect the streets that you talked about, Strollo, Dundee, but we also want to be able to connect the condo, Hurry Woods. So I mean, there's, I'm thinking that we should be putting some money in the, either you call it the maintenance program, or you call it sidewalk maintenance and expansion, whatever we call it. I think we need to plan that we're gonna be spending more money than zero on sidewalks, other than the special project on Cheshire Street.
What's it cost, like, per, I don't know, I mean, tiny figure, per hundred feet?
Just per, per foot, like Dan had the numbers, we typically throw around, or for a replacement, it might be like sixty dollars a foot. A new sidewalk might be plus or minus a hundred dollars a linear foot. So say roughly for a mile of sidewalk, for a new sidewalk, gives roughly, what, a half a billion dollars? Replacement would be about three hundred thousand dollars. Getting back to Dave's comment, I liked your discussion, Dave, about, you know, how do you fund these things? I really recommend two separate funds, because it's too easy for it to get, you know, washed away and absorb into the, the maintenance fund. And really, like, you know, new sidewalks really is separate than the sidewalk maintenance, because we're filling in those sidewalk gaps, we're extending our network, we're make that connectivity. It's, it's, it's really two separate things, and I really would like to see it in two, in two separate accounts.
Now, I had, I had asked Sean to have you folks start looking at that, and you've been doing that anyway. But is there something you'll have in the next couple of weeks as we move forward with this project that you might say, gee, you know, we need five million dollars where the new connections, let's do a half a million a year for ten years? You think you'd have something more concrete for us to look at?
Absolutely, I'm a bit, I know we had a first draft.
Assistant town engineer, i- as part of bringing on new staff, town engineer is tasked, the, the new assistant town engineer, with reviewing and updating our ADA transition plan, and with that kind of coming up with a, a more official program, if you were, as to how we approach sidewalks. You know, and talking to Sean, as to your, your previous conversation with him, I did ask that he take a look at, at the infrastructure that we have. Not looking specifically at, at gaps, but what we have for existing infrastructure, and, and using a, a simple net of a quarter mile around the, the existing schools. You know, we, we came up with a rough number of just replacement of sidewalks that are likely in fair to poor condition. You're, you're close to three million dollars, just, just looking at that. And that's without expansion or, or filling any gaps. A rough number, and looking around the property of Jarvis Street that we're gonna be looking at putting in a school on. While it doesn't have to be in year one, back of the napkin number, just in what he was able to take a, a crack at, it was close to a half a million dollars just to expand, to get to those areas within a quarter mile of the school. Barring mind, the, the schools' walking zones are, are different by age group. A quarter mile isn't even the, the expectation, the expectation of a kindergarten is a half a mile. Once you get up to seventh to twelfth grade, the expectation is a mile and a half. So I think there has to be a lot more in-depth research here as to where we need to target the areas. Are we gonna be targeting different accounts for expansion projects, standalone projects? Obviously, where you do have to get into the design, you know, a hundred dollars a foot, that's, that's a good, good number to, to carry. However, once you get into retaining walls, you, you have to traverse different terrains that you can't really have a solid number on. The easiest way to have a number is when you're doing a direct replacement, and those are, you can be confident in. So once you get into these targeted projects, there has to be more groundwork where you'll come up with a, a specific project.
Quick question. At what point do you look at it where you subcontract the sidewalk versus public works replacing the sidewalks? I mean, obviously, I would think around the school areas, it's gonna be a big project with.
So it depends on, on the type of project that we're looking at. Our crews are more equipped to take care of some of the smaller panel replacement. Once you get into doing longer runs, it's more cost effective in, in a general sense to bring in a subcontractor.
So the dollar a foot is more for the subcontract?
That's more what you're looking for as a subcontractor.
Getting back to the numbers that Dan's talking about, two again, two separate funds.
Right, okay.
For, for these sort of projects, yeah.
So basically, capital would be what we're talking about in this, and then operating is.
Well, no, you say both of the capital because of the size of them, it's separate.
Okay.
Not just the sidewalk maintenance program item, but new or expanded sidewalks.
Okay.
Yeah, we've historically budgeted the maintenance as a recurring funded item in the capital budget.
And generally, that gets targeted around those school areas, and when not around those school areas, it, it's kind of piggybacked with our paving program. And we'll identify areas within those, those paved areas that we'll repair, much to the same effect as they've done this year. They picked up in the spring with the. They picked up in the spring with the Wood Pond neighborhood, where we had done some ramp replacement, and they had identified some segments in there, along with a couple of the other roads that were addressed last year.
They did that about a month ago when they made the whole thing look nice. Is anybody adverse to considering adding another line for newer expanded sidewalk maintenance? And I would say less than a referendum item. I don't know that we need it to be that big, because it's going to be an ongoing thing, I would expect. We have to plan for that.
I do think it's really important we get some numbers on the school connectivity.
Yeah.
I mean, we're taking care of it in Norton, but, you know.
Well, you still may need some at Norton.
At the back end, but that neighborhood is.
I believe that.
That's all sidewalk.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, I mean, that would be something that we would address with, you know, evaluation and a replacement.
And any interior sidewalks recovered with the referendum project.
Well, that could lead us to what do we want to do about roads? Do we want to take a little bit less money on the roads? I mean, honestly, the roads that we're doing now need to be done, but I think, I think we have good roads. I think if you drive our town compared to other towns. I'm not saying don't do roads, I'm not saying don't do them every year. We should do them every year. But I don't know if we need to do 1.9 million dollars. If we do 1.7 million dollars here, and we put 300,000 or 400,000 in a new road account, it's a little bit more combined, but it's still reasonable. It still keeps us at a reasonable number, because I think the bottom line in, you know, what we're looking for here in the first year at 11, almost 12 million dollars, 10 and a half million net is a lot.
And that's what I was wondering, David, some context, because we got to know if we have to look for cuts.
Right.
Or we're okay at 10 or 11 million dollars. I really don't.
Yeah, that's a good question. Historically, I can't remember what we had over the last couple of years.
For roads?
No, not just roads, but overall, and obviously not counting last year's school, because that throws the numbers off.
Yeah, so there's a page that actually shows all of those.
Where is that?
Jim, do you have it memorized?
Well, not just roads, overall.
Towards the back of the capital.
We spent 10 million in capital this year. Is that more or less what we've spent over the last two years?
I think it leads off capital.
Yeah, page 141.
We probably did 1.7 last year. Was there some conversation about last year's projects were a little different because of the weather?
It is 141.
Well, because of the school, too, we really cut everything else back that we thought we could.
No, but even what they did more of last year had to do with the weather, and I thought George had mentioned that.
Oh, for roads, yes.
For roads. I think there was more, you know, the stuff that could get done.
We did have a wet, it was, was it last year, it was the previous year, we had a wet season.
It was a year behind, but it's been approved.
When we sat down last year and had the conversation, is we had chip sealing, chip sealing part of the program. The season for chip sealing closes in September in a relative term, because of temperatures, they can't apply the material. They experienced a wet summer last year, so it kind of pushed their whole schedule out. We were able to use those funds in the spring to pick up that part of the program.
So, that's what happened.
Yeah, yeah.
It was just, the money was spent the way they needed to spend it, so. Because I know there's different rotations in part of the budget. You know, you've got full pave, you've got chip seal, you've got all kinds of cracks.
Seal.
Yeah, all that stuff, so.
If you look at the overall, not just roads, but overall, on page 141, like Sean was saying, take out last year.
Yeah, if you take the five prior years, it's an average of about 9.6 million dollars.
Okay.
On gross.
It's a little bit more this year, the net amount.
But the roads treated.
The net is net of any grants.
How have we maintained, like, that 10% of the roads, whatever it ends up being every year? Because we got 151. We've got to have more mileage now, some of the development taking place.
Getting closer to 153 at this point.
So, you've got 153 miles of roads, you've got basically a 10-year, there's a cycle, you're supposed to.
Yeah, there's a cycle, and it's not all just replacement, of course, as we know. So, there's treatments, there's touching, try to extend the life. Dan is certainly our expert on the program, but, but yes, I think that's, I mean, there's a careful analysis.
But I thought the goal was sort of trying to 10 miles a year, or something like that?
Yeah, like 10%, is roughly, 10 miles, 10 miles by means.
Well, that's not 10%.
Well, 10 miles by means of milling pave and chip seal, and we've used micro sealing treatment, you see on North Cornwall Avenue, Spring Street. By employing those, we've gotten close to 11 to 12 miles, and then we do offset a lot of that, and we actually get close, get more out of it by using crack sealing. The idea with the program, as it was stated well before my time here, was keep the good roads good. No matter how you look at it, you're always fighting an deterioration curve, whether it's on a new road or an old road. So, we'll even start looking at a road that's been paved three years out, so it's generally when we'll start looking at it. Once it's been paved on the milling pave program, at three years, we'll start looking at it to apply liberal amounts of crack seal where they are to keep the water out. We do have a good amount of roads that still haven't been treated in the nine years that I've been here, that still do need attention. They're not the most traffic roads. They are roads that we do get questions about from residents. And they're not any less of a priority, but much to the point is, we do drive around town, and in an effort to keep the good roads good, we've taken care of a lot of the collectors and a lot of the secondary roads to that. It's the, it's the smaller roads that we're now looking to address and get into that similar condition that we're.
And those are generally in some of the neighborhoods that have houses, you know.
Like you see this year's program, we got into Gwinneby River Bridge, and we paved that.
Yeah. And I guess my concern about cutting the money, I don't know how much the money covers, what it does with the paving. So, when you pull back, what have you actually done? Because we know inflation plays a role in this tremendously.
Yeah, we did see a big increase. I think as I reported last year, it was upwards of 20% over.
You could do less.
The start of the season, we're kind of static from where we were at the end of last year, which is still up from the beginning of the year. Not a great deal higher, but.
Well, last year was also two budgets for paving, because we had the special referendum item for East Johnson, was it East or West Johnson?
We merged in, right, a full road reconstruction.
Right.
And which was roughly 800,000 dollars.
Yeah, so there was the design phase and a portion of the overall East Johnson project. That is, design is underway and expected to be completed, and the hope would be to pave, bid and pave that portion from a cause and court to the bridge this season if we can.
But that was merged, to your point, to about a 2.4 million dollar appropriation.
Right.
Right. But roughly 800,000 of that was for road reconstruction, so for a full, for a specific reconstruction. So, the rest was about 1.4 million dollars.
So, it was 1.4, okay, so that's.
I can pull it up.
So, now you're at, what is it now?
1.9 is what's in there now.
Right.
As the recommendation for this year from Sean. I think staff recommended 2.2.
Right, and David, but going back to the big picture, what's the implication of like that range of, you know, 7 million, 6 million versus 11 million on these expenditures? What's the implication to the town on that, you know, 2 million, 3 million dollar?
Wait, well, that's a good question. What, if we, what's the cost?
Do we have to be at these costs or?
Right. What's, next year's mill rate going to go up, but how much per million that we borrow does the, is the debt service each year? So that we get an idea.
Yes, I can pull that on the screen.
And we don't need that right now, but we want that far deliberations.
You know, if it's not that important, then why, you know, why be, why be, you know, too, too fussy about this? But if it is, I think we need to be fussy about it.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, I mean, the general rule of thumb we've used, and I know in the past we've used 4%, and it was always very conservative. Now, it's less conservative, because 4% is closer to the borrowing rate. This, this is a chart that the town has produced for years on a $1 million bond issuance. The associated principal and interest, you kind of, the first year is always an interest-only payment. So, your first full year, the kind of peak, and we, the way we advertise our principal payoff, it's sort of front-loaded. So, it's $92,000, which.
For a million.
For a million dollars, it's about $92,000 worth of debt service. It's hard to say added debt service, because there's always debt service that falls off, but if you look at it from a zero base, it is added debt service of 92,600, which is a mil increase of about .03 mils on our last mill rate, as well as proposed. But again, that could all be extrapolated. You just multiply those numbers by 10, if you want a $10 million issuance, and you've got about $920,000 worth of associated debt service. Or three tenths of.
But if you do it 10 million a year, you would think that 10 million is falling off, so.
Right.
But when we increase from 6 million or 7 million to 10 million, 11 million, that's, would seem to.
Yeah, we average this closure rate of 8 to 10, before the school project throws everything.
And how long does this, how long does, does this stay active? I mean, it's 30 years?
It's always 20. We always borrow in 20, and that's really kind of the maximum. There are some communities that borrow for 30 on the school projects, but that's pretty rare. 20 years is the typical borrow.
What, it seems like it's important not to, I mean, we had, going back to what we had here before, 11 million in '22, of course, last year, but it was 5 million the year before that, and I really, you know, have to look at what it is. I think it's important to just not continue at 11 for 12 million, year after year now, because I think we're going to pay a price for that.
Well, that's a fair point. If we wanted to cut it down to 9 million, what would we want to cut out?
What would we cut?
I can tell you, I don't know that two fire trucks in one year is a reasonable way to go. I mean, I think we have something.
So, delivery?
Well, okay, I understand that, but it's going to be the same thing next year, and why didn't we buy them all last year, then? I think if we need one a year, you know, if we have 20 and they last 20 years, let's get one a year. We got bunched up, I don't know why we got bunched up that the request is for two this year, but, you know, if we do one this year, let them choose which one. Either one is about a billion dollars. You know, let's say we commit, then we'll do another one next year and another one a year after.
I think we've had discussions about some of that personally.
Yeah, I think we did also. It just came up in the operating agreement. But, you know, this is something that we'd have to look at if we want to hit off the 11 million dollar.
Well, I think he made a point about the incredible lead times. And then, you know, the trucks we have just get older. So, we're not driving around, you know, 15-year-old trucks to replace it. That's part of the issue. So, you order them now, and you just wait forever, and I'm not sure they get cheaper because you waited. That's probably the issue.
Well, that's true. Nothing gets cheaper. I mean, we should be buying a lot more now and not buy anything in a couple of years.
Yeah, well, I'm not trying to advocate we spend more money, but on some of these things, it just takes forever to get.
But would a year make a difference, David? I mean, how bad are they? I don't know. Well, what I would, what I would say, I met with Chief Geisner for about an hour, actually, hour and a half, and we spent most of the time today talking about this issue. And one concern he's expressing, which I think we're all sharing, is that what that number, there's no, you know, added fluff in that number. We think that's a good number. However, it's what you pay at time of delivery. That's the problem with this. So, predicting, I mean, really, what we should do is actually have enough flexibility in that number that we don't want to have to go back to the voters again, because we're short 50,000 or 100,000 dollars. It's a very difficult thing to sort of have to articulate, but the reality is, you know, we will only bond for what is actually paid for to the dealer, well. So, you know, I know it's, it's hard. We don't want to look like we're over-budgeting for it, but predicting three years out what a fire truck's going to cost is really, really challenging, especially if the consequence, trying to weigh the pros and cons, if the con is, oops, we were short, and we don't want to go, you know, then you're almost, it leads you to trying to budget those numbers higher. And waiting that year, I think the fear would be, it's another year. It's now predicting the price four years from now, really, from today at least. And again, the chief can speak to the condition of the trucks. He definitely, from the age alone standpoint, they maintain them in as good a shape as you can. We saw, he has pictures of rusted chassis.
Yeah, because it's all water equipment, you know, there's pumps and trucks and.
Right. So, I mean, there could be flexibility in putting two of them together in one budget question. I know we talked about that. And there's also other, again, this is, this is a Pierce product. It's the, it's what we have always purchased, and it's what we've come to expect and know how to maintain. There are other brands out there. Some of them do come at lower cost points a little bit, not.
They aren't their Pierce trucks.
But they do, and I think, I mean, I was.
Consistency is a factor.
The consistency is a factor. But I was sort of brainstorming with him, what would we do if we ran short? Would we have to purchase every product? Is there a deposit associated with this? So, it's complicated. I know Chief Geisner would welcome the opportunity to come back and talk through some of the options that go up there.
Let's have him back. And one, one point is that we are only making a deposit until we get it four years from now. So, half is now, and the other half is going to be paid for four years. So, we're not going to be bonding the money till then. So, while it may look like we're going to bond 10 and a half million dollars, we're really only going to bond.
So, the way we fire trucks, we order it now, and then we pay what the cost is when it comes in, when it's available.
There's got to be some business. Oh, yeah.
There's got to be something to keep in line.
50% deposit. Historically, we've paid, right, and we've paid, I think, a 50% deposit because we've gotten lower pricing, historically. But to the point, we haven't purchased fire trucks since 2019. I think we took delivery in 2019 or 2020.
I'm sure this way the system works, it's just really, really is.
Yes.
So, it's 2019 we last purchased. What was that, the latter truck?
I would have to confirm. I know we took delivery in either 19 or 20. No, that was, the latter truck was before I started.
Oh, okay, fine. We talked about it for 10 years.
Probably, yeah. We took a pumper truck in 2019, I think.
Talked a lot about fire trucks in my life.
I think the latter truck, truck one, was, I think, 2017.
Okay.
One other item is a little bit smaller, but I know with these gentlemen here, the first item on the list, the kind of draft notice of public hearing associated, is a boiler replacement at the police station. I just had a conversation. I know one item that I had moved out a year was the parking lot at the police station. I think in conversations with our, with Public Works, that of those two, one's 200,000, one's 150,000. I'm not trying to make this go in the wrong direction, but we would probably prioritize, I think, the parking lot, given the current condition, the parking lot over the boiler, if we had, again, this is one of those updates in the last couple of months of conversations that if we do it again today, we might swap those. I don't know if there's anything more on that, Dan?
Yeah, the boiler was added, I think, while George is still here, has an effect to the age of the equipment and that 25 to 30-year life expectancy of boilers. It is still in functional operator, operational condition. Can't guarantee anything with those, but it worked well through the season. The parking lot, on the other hand, has been in a deteriorated condition for some time. If we, if we don't get into paving it in this year, we will have to take measures to do some patchwork, and that does come at a cost that we would like to avoid if we, if we can.
Are you going to paint where the gravel is too, that area?
That, that is a, that is a, just a milling slot.
Say that, just say that.
Yeah.
How much is the cost of the paving?
200, it was 200 in the budget. It was one I moved, I moved it out to year two.
Yeah.
I think if we could do it again, I would have maybe moved out the boiler instead of that one. It's 200,000 instead of 100.
So, you're thinking you'd like us to consider switching?
If there is an opportunity with the costs, I would like to get as fresh of a number before you took any action.
Yeah, we can get that.
I mean, we're open to considering switch, so get us a hundred number as we get closer.
Are we going to go through, I mean, there are other items in here I might bring, but this is not the.
Yeah, and some of them, we, you know, I'd want to have the department head here to speak to some of them.
Well, Public Works is here, but the, but the generator design, how critical was that right now?
So, that one is really critical. That's what I moved up a year. We, we're, that's directly tied to the EOC project that the state's funding. We had a meeting just earlier today on initial design for that. That building, that room is right next to the generator for this building that is an in-house diesel generator that is incredibly loud, right next to the room that has been designated for the EOC. But not just, is it incredibly loud, it is very, very old, and it has failed, it's a couple of times.
Yeah, so we, last year, fortunately, right after, we received the appropriation from the state of Connecticut for the EOC, we had some issues with the generator, and it noted that there was white smoke coming out of the pipe during running and load time. I identified that there is blow-by, and there was leaks on the manifold gasket. We did receive costs for removing and actually rebuilding that, that equipment, and that would include rebuilding the engine only. So, the electrical components of that would be original to the 1989 build from the town hall expansion. With that, the consideration for replacement of the generator to a location outside of the building with a sound attenuated enclosure, new emergency transfer switch, and relocation of some of the other support equipment, giving us the ability to locate, if we had to, an emergency backup generator, one or two, to be located at the loading dock as opposed to in the middle of the parking lot, if you've seen the ones that we've had to have here in the past. So, that's what brought this up. The need is certainly there, once, obviously, the town hall supports a lot of computer equipment that's critical to other infrastructure in town, police department, fire department, or light, really warranting schools as well. Really warranting that and further this, once we've established an emergency operations center. It really is a critical facility to have online.
Okay, just asking a question, and then, I know the chief was, I wasn't here. Okay, just asking a question. And then, I know the chief was, I wasn't here when, when, the police chief, when we talked about the...
Prison.
Prison and the traffic study, the comprehensive traffic study. I don't know how much flexibility is on that. I don't know how important they are. I personally, from the traffic study standpoint, would like to see some of the development in town implemented before we study, because we're gonna be doing a study based upon projections, and those projections are, we don't know on the school-aged children, for instance, for sure. We really don't know on the traffic generation, for sure.
We could discuss that, I believe.
I don't know where it stands.
Well, you know, I think what happened was, we think we can get some of that funded through the COGS. And that came out of conversation with Michael Glidden.
So, the town decided to, did we make a decision or not?
To try that first before we do any funding.
I don't know, but I see it right here.
Because the state, the state...
This is only what the recommendation was.
Right. The state can really, you know, play a role, the COGS can play a role in that.
This is not Public Works, but we have six hundred. Is there something, or is that just adding to a budget for land acquisition?
So, that land acquisition was, is nonspecific. That would be replenishing the land acquisition account.
Okay, I was just curious.
I don't have the number offhand, but it has gotten down to a lower, not that we've had historically, but no, that was one that I added. And it was at a six hundred thousand dollar level. That's ultimately a council decision. We would put it to a referendum number, understanding, and if we do that and we put the number, that's completely up to the council, whether you want that as a referendum item or not.
I would put that as a referendum item if you paid.
Yep, so that, again, that, there's, but there's no specific purchase.
Well, we, but this isn't for either of the ones that we've been talking about.
No.
This would just be a general...
Yeah, stuff we really need to buy. And to have a kitty, I think, is, I wouldn't wanna ask for that this year.
You would not wanna ask for that this year?
I would not wanna ask for that.
Okay. What do we have there now? Hundred and fifty, hundred and seventy-five?
I don't know, and I know there's some grant money that we're due still from Fen Road.
Right, Fen, yeah.
It'd be nice to have a little bit more in that fund, but maybe not that much for this one year. Maybe we just, you know, just don't...
Well, part of we wanna consider that two, three years down the road, when the schools get in, we're gonna have a skinny year on other departments as well. We did that last year in order to make the schools look, you know, to show that the schools were our priority. And then, when we actually have to start paying for those, realistically, I would think the town council at that time would wanna say, hey, we gotta cut back on a few other things this year. So, this year and next year may be the year to do some things that we wanted to do, that we may not plan to do three, four years down the road.
So, you want some land money?
No, I don't know. I...
Hey, it's never a bad idea. I'm not suggesting it.
No, it's not.
I'm just thinking, anything referendum associated with something we're not telling them about is...
Yeah. I mean, we've got seven, eight referendum questions. Seven referendum questions, that's too many. That means we're doing more than we probably should be doing, is my thinking. You know, and something with the fire trucks, either a combination or whatever, could make that down to one less. Leaving off the land could make that down to one less. We have, we know we have to add industrial avenue. That's how we got up to seven. Yeah, so we've gotta continue the discussions. Your vehicles, that's the next item.
That's a big number. I don't know if Gary has any one there, doesn't need all of them right now. You went through that, Gary. I think you had an explanation for most of them. Maybe, maybe there's somewhere more.
Tower, what's that?
Yeah.
That's what you call it.
You did?
No.
The one that we replace lights and things like that.
I thought there might be some left over down at Bartlett we could take.
You know, you're trying to give away what we've been... The other thing, I'm wondering, the four seventy for Cheshire Street sidewalks, I mean, maybe that could be in two phases, just, you know, rather than do the whole thing at once. I don't know.
I don't know if that would save us any money. If they're ready and it's designed, the intent is to get people from one park to the next. So, I don't know if half there, that might be, I mean, if it would save money.
Just bringing the neighborhoods to Cheshire Park?
It's bringing them to the, to Quinipiac Park, but it's also gonna make access down to the gorge.
Okay.
Is that called Norton or Sindal?
I thought the gorge wasn't in there.
Right, but you don't need them on that little side one. That's a...
I think bringing them to the gorge was supposed to, we were thinking maybe in a second phase.
Yeah, I don't think that's in there. That's not in this number.
But it brings, it's on Cheshire Street down to Norton or to Sindal? I forgot which one.
No, Sindal was a conversation towards a later project. They've designed, they've designed now.
I'm just throwing out, I thought, I mean, I'm not suggesting it's the right thing to do. I'm just saying maybe it's a way to get a ways from the park and then extend to the next phase.
Right.
If the design, so I mean, the construction could be done in phases.
If it makes any sense. If it doesn't, I'm just looking for ways that we can push some things out of this year, but...
Probably won't keep that one. That's one project that'll make sense. Talking about that project, I think this is probably the three, I think.
Yeah, it got pushed off 'cause of the expense. It got changed.
And there were some concerns about acquisitions and things. Whatever they had to tailor to make it, to make it feasible.
But all that's ready now, it's ready to just go to...
Sounds like it's ready.
David, can you take the amount from number thirty-three for vehicle equipment replacement one? What is that specifically for?
Three sixty, please.
Number thirty-three.
Yeah.
Put that towards one of the trucks, fire trucks.
That's...
Those are your police cruisers.
Oh, those are the police cruisers. That's what I was wondering. Can't do that.
Well, I mean, those are, police cruisers, those are...
They wouldn't like that. They wouldn't like that. Neil will get it done. Sorry, Neil.
Especially since he's making money on that.
Well, that portion of this amount, yeah.
It's not the entire amount, just to be clear, but that will include your police cruisers or building, Public Works item. And then, there's some WCD items in there.
Forget that.
So, what are we looking at? Three, three questions we think is the maximum we're gonna want?
That's on the question, random question?
Three or four?
Three or four?
I think it depends on the questions.
Right, that's true. It does.
I mean, I'd be curious to find out with, about, from Jack, about the two trucks, 'cause I mean, one's from two thousand, one's two thousand and three. So, do we replace the older one first and then wait a year or two?
Two thousand and three.
Yeah, one's from two thousand and three, one's from two thousand, yeah.
Well, one thing we could do, we could do one for a fire truck. We'd have to decide what that would be.
Right.
Yeah.
One for road work, combining both things, which we've done before. You'll say, okay, this is what we need, two point five million dollars for road work, including the additional money we need for industrial avenue. I mean, that's, and then, you know, the regular road work. And then, we could have a third question, the CHS windows, and then the boiler replacement at that. Or we could combine those two as well. CH, you could buy education, say this is one, one point two million dollar question for existing education.
Windows has to be separate, 'cause that's like an ongoing...
So, the only thing to keep in mind, the caveat I was gonna say, is that we also have that requirement in our charter that has a five-year look back.
Right.
So, I don't know sitting here right now for sure. We could have it for the next meeting. There could be a hundred thousand or a two hundred thousand dollar item, particularly, we see it often on the Board of Ed side, 'cause there are these recurring items. Window replacements, district lavatory improvements. Again, we have to sit with bond council and get very specific as to, when it says district lavatory improvements, underlying that, the actual appropriation will say for Doolittle. The next one will say for Highland, whatever. That keeps us in the clear. But if there's a general item that's nonspecific, and then in total, a hundred thousand, and we've seen this before too. There was a year we had window replacements at two hundred and fifty thousand, and the language says on the referendum question, because in total, it's over five hundred over the last five years. I just wanna be clear, we can't just go down that list and say everything's five hundred is guaranteed. We will, I'll have Jim have that for you. Nice meeting.
Yeah.
But I don't want there to be any surprise referendum questions, because there's an item on there.
Right, and that's a fair point to remember, because we don't always recall all the years.
Right.
But that doesn't necessarily mean that the boiler and the windows can't be one question.
I think they can. I think...
Yeah, because you've done windows ongoing, I think it has to be separate, 'cause it's adding on to previous referendum.
I'd wanna ask bond council for an opinion.
Pretty sure we've been down that...
All right, well, let's continue on if others have questions regarding the items. A lot of the remaining ones are Public Works, which we've talked about, and school.
Pretty...
It's not up there, it's not a lot of...
No, you know, the prisoner cell renovations, we did have some conversations with that.
Yeah, we did.
We thought that was pretty expensive housing, but we also thought there were some issues, well, or the chief brought to our attention.
To be, the chief is here too, 'cause he's for our next item. He's right...
He's right in that room across.
Invite him over. If you wanna do it now, we... Well, he's here for the next agenda.
Yeah, just tell him to put his hands up.
So, you're welcome to come. I'm sure it'll be happy.
He's eating the leftover cake. Cake on the hospital, so I forget him. Having a nap in there?
We didn't know you were there. We would've had you come down.
Napping downstairs. I figured once I came up here, I shouldn't nap.
Tell him with Sandy chair.
So...
We're on the Capitol.
The prisoner cell items came in.
Yeah.
Ah, since you're here.
Then we don't have to wait to discuss it.
It's some of the most expensive housing in town.
I know, I have my picture. Sure, I can pull it. Here's the, but certainly, if we, yeah, if you want us to pull it, I can...
We were just considering the cost of a hotel room.
No, it's, yeah, it's not, it's not cheap. I tried to explain it in there, the way that, and again, it was just kind of an informal conversation with Brian Humes, who's done a lot of work, you know, for us. And the issue becomes, once you put the solid front on the cell, you have to redo the air returns, because now the cell is, you know, if the air return is out in what now is the hallway, there's no air circulation getting into the cell. So, it's not just a matter of changing out the, you know, the kind of the internal workings of the, of the cell there. There's a lot of rerouting of air ducts and things like that.
It's like a kitchen renovation.
Yeah, probably is, yeah, yeah. It never...
I forgot that.
Now, this was a safety issue?
Yeah, so, so these are our current cells. So, the best practice now, as we'll see in the later pictures, so, there's no protection here, right? If somebody was going to try to harm themselves, usually it's gonna be by hanging inside a cell. There's the bars here that they can tie clothing items around and things like that. The other thing is, if they are hostile, right, they can throw things directly through here at the officers. Now, you don't have to use your imagination too much to determine what they have to throw.
Yes.
Urine and, yes. So, there's another, plus, you'll notice that our beds are kind of welded to the wall, but there's this space underneath them. So, if somebody, again, is being difficult, they can get themselves under there, and it's, now it's a big use of force to kind of get them out. So, is the other?
Yep.
Some of the renovated ones.
Those are the ones I remembered.
Those were the ones that...
Solid.
They look like gas chambers.
Yeah, so that's... If you're building a, if you're building a police facility now, that's what your cell would look like. You know, this opens up, you just pass food through there. If you have somebody who's, you know, you're particularly concerned about, you have them back up here. Stick their arms, so you handcuff them before they even come out. Yep, there, obviously, there's no bars there, so there's nothing for them to tie, you know, clothing around. And obviously, look, we take, we take their belts and stuff like that. The toilet unit and the sink, obviously, all in one. No space underneath the bed for them to, you know, to kind of crawl under. You know, the big thing, I think, is the, like, they can't throw anything out at, you know, an officer coming in. There's nowhere for them to hide, not only themselves, but contraband, that, you know, something that they might have been able to smuggle into the cell. You know, the, what's, what's really prompted the beginning of this is that, sorry, so, our toilet units are, they're really old, right? They're at least twenty years old, and they're starting to fail. There's sometimes, there's seals and things in the plumbing there that dry out if, you know, when the cells aren't used. It's to the point now where at least twice a week, it's a responsibility of one of the supervisors to go in and go around to all the cells and flush the toilet to try to keep, to try to keep it, you know, from drying out that way. But again, you know, it's like any, if you had a toilet bowl in your house and it was twenty years old, you'd be looking at it going, all right, we need to change this at some point. So, that, you know, that's kind of where we are. And I don't wanna give anybody, you know, we've had one or two kind of, what I would call non-serious, you know, threats of self-harm, where somebody's kind of nodded their T-shirt around here, but they're all on camera. We've all gotten in there, you know, plenty of time. I don't know that anybody was really seriously trying to harm themselves, but, you know, but certainly, it's a lot easier to do it in a, in a cell like that than it is in one that's newly configured. And those ones that we showed you, I think, were either from Berlin or, yeah, Berlin.
It says Berlin PD.
Yeah, right, so, yeah, yeah, Berlin did that one. And that's fairly recent, so... Again, if you can picture our cells, there's, I think there's eleven altogether. There's four, there's eight male cells, and then completely separated around the corner in a separate wing, almost. There's three female cells. Eventually, and somebody caught on when I put the request in, that I'd like to redo four of the male cells and the three female cells, and then eventually come back to you and ask that the second set of male cells, which is on the, they, they kind of butt up to some administrative officers with the traffic division already, and I'd like to eventually convert that all to storage, because we are, we're running out of, no, I mean, yeah, we probably don't. And then, I mean, I can count on the fingers of one hand in the twelve years I've been here, the number of times we've had a male and female prisoner in at the same time. And usually, when they are, they're from the same, you know, they're, it's a shoplifting team or something like that. You know, so it's, but again, the number of times that we've had more than, I think the most we've ever had is like three prisoners. And it was just, like, it was probably, you know, a male and female shoplifting team, and then a domestic that happened, you know, that same night. We ended up with three people in the cell, but, you know, it's very rare now, you know, with criminal justice reform being what it is, that we get to hold people, even if we want to hold them. The bail commissioner comes in and reduces their bond anyway or releases them on a PTA for the typical charges that we're facing here, which are mostly misdemeanor, so...
With these kinds of cells, though, is it necessary to have separate area for male and female?
You want, ideally, you want them completely separated by sight and sound, so when you're walking somebody in and out, you don't wanna walk, you wouldn't wanna parade a female prisoner past a male in there who could be sitting on the toilet or something like that.
Can't block the shades.
Having somebody with shades.
No shades.
The number that I gave you is, Brian Humes did most of the work on the projects that I was able to get recent numbers for. And it's kind of an average of what it, what it cost per cell for the other ones that he did. That's where I came up with the numbers. I think it's seventy thousand per cell for seven cells. It may come in a little bit less than that. I was trying to err on that, you know. I know it's better to go a little over.
Looking at this, it looks like it'd be more. I mean, that's expensive.
You're really effectively changing the interior. You're not changing the wall, the structure. You're just changing the front and the interior and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, like the air return, so as, as you can, you know, there'd be no air circulation in there.
And the beds on the inside. These are big, this is a complicated, you know, project.
How long is somebody normally in a cell? At the longest, is it twelve hours maybe?
No, it can be, if we get somebody on a Friday who can't make bond, they're in for the weekend.
Per weekend, they stay in?
Yeah, and if it's this weekend, they're in until Tuesday.
I mean, is it, is it possible to consider getting more detailed design and, and done with hard estimates during this year and budgeting it next year, because I'm a little nervous about just budgeting this number.
That you underestimated.
I just, I don't, I mean, it may be a right number, but I think it's gonna be very site-specific. Be nice to do this in a logical manner, rather than just jump in and, and you can get a price to get the storage done and everything at the same time.
Yeah, I don't wanna give anybody the impression that the building's falling in on itself or anything like that, but yeah, and look, I mean, when you gotta budget something in order to do that, but yeah, that would, I'd be a lot more comfortable with that, 'cause I still don't have a handle on, you know, materials and corruption increases and things like that.
If you wanna take some cells out at the same time and get that into storage, budgeting it to one big project as opposed to, you know, try and...
Well, if we're gonna have it, if we're gonna have it designed, I would ask for that price as part of that, whether you wanted to divide that up later. You know, you could make a decision once you know how much the project's gonna involve.
The photographs make it clearer as to, you know, why you think this is, you know, appropriate.
All right, other questions for the chief while he's here for...
I did wanna talk about the traffic study briefly, 'cause I wasn't there when you had that conversation. Chief, I, clearly, what's, what's the goal and objective of the traffic study? Because one thought I had was, I mean, you're gonna be doing traffic calming, I assume, maybe, maybe not only just volume work in, in, for traffic calming, you're looking at bike... bike routes and pedestrian routes as well as part of the study? And is there any value in waiting or doing it in two steps while we see what the implications of all these new developments are relative to, relative to traffic generation? Just a thought, so, I don't know what you had in mind.
Yeah, well, I would hope that we can get something comprehensive done that incorporates everything, traffic calming, pedestrian routes, bike routes, everything. But I think that the way I was looking at it was, maybe we should have it done, and I think it kind of dovetailed with what was the planning and zoning, or somebody else was, was also saying, like, you know, I wasn't trying to make a joke, but I think the analogy I made was that, you know, 10 years from now, people are gonna be sitting around going, you know, those, those councils and town officials just approved everything for so long, that now it takes 45 minutes to get from 691 to the Maple Prom. You know, we've got so many things coming online, that if there's a, if there's a, you know, I don't know, maybe it's something as simple as somebody saying, you know, a study saying, look, if you're gonna approve that development in that area, you've got to include road widening, a turn lane, whatever, stuff that we don't really do now, you know, something like that, that I just...
Unfortunately, the way the state statutes are, you can't really require offsite. And I do agree that looking ahead and being proactive in terms of traffic, 'cause there's a lot of activity going on. I'm not sure, for instance, the North End, if there's a big commercial development, whether it's gonna generate a lot of traffic coming up through the North End, to Hampden, through Route 10, or where it's gonna just come off of 691, and I'm, you know, we did the estimates for that, and I asked our traffic, how good are your estimates? He said, they're as good as we can do them, but we really don't know, you know, for sure, so. And I also, and I know Jim and I have spoken about this, bike routes is something that's important to me as well, I think, you know, incorporating that as much as we can in the community, because that's something that, that I think is very important as we, as we go forward. And so, I, I'm just asking a question, I mean, I think it's definitely an important thing to do.
Well, we had, like, you know, for example, Gary and I exchanged emails today about